Amanda, did you speak with Ben?
Yes, he said he was coming on.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Silver Town Board of Commissioners to order. You should have your agenda and your packet. I would entertain a motion to approve our agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Mary. We have a motion to approve the agenda. Please, Amanda, would you take role?
Sorry, discussion on it. I was just thinking, we have two discussion items, four and five, and two presentation items with guests that are at the very end. I was thinking maybe we might want to move those two presentations towards the beginning, although I don't see either of the people here that are presenting yet, but...
And I don't think our other items will take a lot of time.
All right. Sounds good.
All right. Thank you, Amanda.
Barbara?
Yes.
Greg?
You're muted.
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. The agenda's approved. Next is, in your package, you have the consent agenda, and we need a motion to approve it.
So moved.
Excuse me, who?
Sorry, I'm making a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, David. Amanda?
Barbara? Greg?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Next is public comment, and we have no public comment scheduled for today. So we will move on to the reports. The only thing that I have to report is I have received, and I'm sure some of you have also concerns about Railroad Avenue. And I've watched people are still going down the road the wrong way, still trying to turn out. So I wondered if we could ask Jake if he could get with the DOT and see if we can come up with another option, as suggested, change the turn. Don't let people go out that way, but don't let them turn back across the crosswalk. Does anybody else have anything to say about that? Ben?
Yeah, I agree, I see folks going both ways. And also, right at the corner of, is this still Allen Street where it comes down in front of the, yeah, so Allen there at the church, it's a real blind spot. So if you're going towards the tracks, you know, past the bike shop towards the tracks, I think there's a one, there's a stop for folks coming, you know, from railroad there. But the folks on Allen could just kind of keep going through. I was wondering if it's possible to move the stop sign back or have another stop sign as well. I don't think it'll address the people turning the wrong way, but it might make them think too, they're sitting at a stop sign at the street, and they're not going to make a right-hand turn. Because you could also say no right-hand turn there. This is a suggestion.
Okay, thank you. Can we just revisit that, Scott, Jake?
Yeah, Mayor, I'll talk to the DOT. That's a town-owned street, so their involvement would just be making recommendations. But we'll see if we can get some paint, some traffic mediation signage. Well, I'll explore the options and report back.
Thank you. And that's all I have. Oh, excuse me, Greg?
I guess since we're talking about this, the sign board says that when you're coming down Mill Street, it says, "Take a right to public parking at your next right." And that puts you at the wrong end of Railroad Avenue. It should say, "Take a right at the second right."
We'll fix that, Greg.
Thank you. Thank you, Jake. Thank you all. Now for Commissioners' report, Barbara?
I really don't have anything other than I'm glad to see how many people have been in town lately. Looks like the businesses are getting more business, and it it just feels like we're advancing a little bit. That's all I have.
Thank you. Greg?
Not a whole lot to report. Did want to mention that the Jackson Arts Market is expanding and putting a lot of venues on their calendar or on a on a flyer saying where in town you can go to see local art. And a lot of businesses are participating in that, which is very exciting. That's all I have today.
Thank you. Mary? Oh, excuse me, Jake?
Yeah, just one quick thing there to kind of piggyback off what Greg was saying. If you, board members, will help me in reminding everybody that flyers are a violation of the temporary sign ordinance, and they're messy, and they get wet, and they cause a big a big mess for everybody to have to clean up and lay around, and it ends up in the storm drains and stuff. So if you will help me in reminding folks that flyers are frowned upon around here, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Jake. Yes, we will. Now, Mary?
I attended Mayor Fitzgerald's reception honoring his retirement, and Mike is a special fella to me. He's been on Main Street since 1989. He bought an established business in 1931. And I think that Fitzgerald's is critical to our community and a real asset to downtown Silva. And I just want to acknowledge Mike's service to our community. He's a very neighborly man and sets a fine example for the town of Silva. I also just want to thank Dave Russell for the wonderful article he put in the paper last week about my father and his contribution to Main Street for the last 50 years. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary, and I agree with both of those. I did speak with Mike, and he's not closing his business. He's gonna keep his business, just moved out of Dillsborough so he could no longer be mayor. And congratulations to your dad, too.
Retiring either.
Yeah. Yeah. I wanted to second that, too. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I apologize. Sorry. I just wanted to second that, too. It's amazing, you know, having a cobbler in town like that is like, it's such a special thing. And, I mean, I mean, he can fix anything, like, you know, if it's, sometimes even goes beyond shoes, but it's it's such an asset, and Livingston as well, it's awesome. So congratulations to both of them.
David?
I do not have a report today. Thank you.
Thank you. Then we will move on to our other business. The Managers' Report, as you know, Paige?
Wait. Did, I don't know, did I miss something? I didn't, I have a report.
I'm sorry, I thought you were finished after...
Oh, no, I was just seconding in there, sorry. Yeah, no, my report is, is, it sucks, but it's COVID, man. It's like, every day I've been working, last four shifts, I've seen COVID cases coming in, all unvaccinated. I had a 17-year-old, 27-year-old, 31-year-old, and a 33-year-old. The 33-year-old had bilateral blood clots in their lungs and respiratory distress, got sent to mission. And so those are all 100% preventable. The, unfortunately, the, I talked to the Health Department yesterday. We're at 30, 37% vaccination rate here, which is pitiful, which means that we are just like waiting for the Delta virus to just set up shop here. I mean, we're not going to see this kind of January stuff again. But we're going to see lives and families disrupted in a big way. Whether it's going to be death, but or not, it's probably going to be less, less people dying, but it's, and probably less people going to the hospital. But, you know, as I know, and, and many people know that these, just getting COVID can leave some really bad, long-lasting health problems, or create long-lasting health problems. So just so important that we kind of just stamp this out. It's just, there's nobody admitted, but it's just, it sucks when you walk back in there and, and, you know, and now, when you see something that is so preventable, it's just, it's so tragic. So just wanted to, to kind of, just to get that out there. Thanks.
Thank you, and I apologize. Well, then next, we will move on to our other reports, and there's really no report from Paige. She sent you an update, but she is at the city and county managers' meeting for the rest of this week. And she hopes to learn a lot of things from other managers to how they're talking about using their funds that they're going to get from the American Rescue Plan. So I'm sure she'll come back with lots of information for us. Next, Jake, if you'll give us the public corpse?
Good morning, everybody. I want to start with an Allen Street update. I hope everybody got a chance to read what I sent out there a couple days ago. Final drilling should wrap up today. So that's good. And then we're looking at a two- to three-week laboratory turnaround time and getting those, that data in the hands of both the contractor and Kessel for further examination. The drilling has gone well, except for that torrential downpour. On Tuesday morning, that was a bit of a delay. But that's the update there. We have a contract in hand for Worster for their preliminary role in all this, pending a little bit more review by Eric. We'll be, we'll hope to be moving forward with that by the end of the week. I met Dennis Desmond from Main Springs Replacement, electronically via telephone, Keldar Monar. He's working for Main Spring, and he's taking Dennis's place, and he'll be helping with Pinnacle Park monitoring. And he'll be a valuable partner moving forward up there. And Monday, the 24th, Chris Lee and I, the Division Engineer for the DOT, have a pedestrian safety walk downtown. To, it's kind of a follow-up of something we did last fall. I'm anxious to explore some of the safety improvements that we've made in the last year. We have, we have made some good strides, we've got a lot more work to do. So we're going to look at what's been done and what, what else needs to be done, and that'll be a golden opportunity to look at Railroad Avenue. And any of you that would like to attend that are welcome, if you're able. Ben, you came last year, or to the, to the last one. If you're able, I'd absolutely extend that invitation again.
Yeah, I'd love to, it's hard, when was that again?
Monday, the 24th.
Monday, 24th. What time? It was like nine or something?
Nine AM.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
That concludes my report. If you guys don't have any questions.
Does anybody have questions of Jake? All right, then.
Oh, sorry, last one. I just wanted to point out to Jake, so so the crosswalk at Municipal there in front of Town Hall, I keep getting all kinds of people saying, "Thank you, that was really needed." It's great, so appreciate that you're getting that all set up there.
Happy to.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, we will move on to the Police Department report.
Hey, good morning, everybody. Hope everybody's doing well. We've had a busy month, as usual, a lot of secondary things this month, rather than, than the primary stuff. We had spent a lot of time getting some officers some vacations, which has been nice for them. And also, lots of background investigations and hiring process type things. It's not hiring folks in law enforcement, it's a lot, a little more difficult than it is in, in other businesses, and so it takes a little more time. But right now, we've got candidates selected for our vacant positions. We have had an officer that's going to start July 1st. And we've also got our new Assistant Chief, who will be starting Monday, which we're excited about that. And I'm looking forward to introducing him to you. And he's going to be, he's going to make our department a lot stronger, and it's just going to be a really good thing. And he's going to be a great addition for our community here. I'm excited about it. And, let's see, we're in the process of, we, I've mentioned it to you a little bit before, we're in the process of partnership with Western Carolina University, where we're exploring the ways that somebody with a social work background can improve our service to our citizens. And so we're, we're in the process of that, of figuring out what that looks like and, and what the benefits are and that kind of thing. So there's some pretty exciting stuff coming for that, especially when the semester gets kicked off again. And so we are also been spending a lot of time getting ready for greening up the mountains, of course, just, just like every time. That's going to be interesting to see how that, how that plays out with vendors and that kind of thing. So we're, we're working on that. And North Carolina, I won't bore you with the details, but they've made a couple major changes with the databases that we use as law enforcement. And so there's, we basically have whole new systems that we're having to learn and do training and that kind of thing. So that's taken up quite a bit of time, the entire PD's having to do that. So we're sort of having to learn a new language, is what it kind of feels like. So we're working on that, and then be training on some cloud-based analytic stuff that's going to be maybe helpful in the future. And we assisted with the Leroy Jackson Memorial 5K Run in June, which was actually a lot of fun. When, that was a fun event to work. And we're working on some, we have lots of events for Bridge Park, as you guys know, and the permits are pouring in, and so we're doing a lot of, a lot of stuff preparing for that as well. Just real quick rundown of some of the things we've done in the last 30 days. We have had 32 crash investigations. We've responded to six fights in progress. Let's see, I'm looking down through the list here. 37 investigations where people have called in suspicious activity by a person. And they wanted us to check it out 18 times, where it was just a vehicle somewhere, and they wanted us to check out. We've had, we had five break-ins, and 13 animal calls, or animal-related calls. One of them was the pig that has now become infamous in Silva. Thank you, Jake. We had 25 alarm investigations we had to do to find out why the alarm was going off. Four just regular assaults, eight domestic violence-related calls. 23 disturbances and disputes, 16 large any shopliftings, and about 10 reckless drivers. We've had plenty to do, for sure. Things are well, everybody's, like I said, we're getting, getting fully staffed, and that, that's a big deal. I will say, we, we're losing one very important person for us. We're losing Sergeant Heath Jones. He's going to the Sheriff's Office. He's going to be a detective there, and he is going to be missed. He's been here about eight years, I think, and that's a lot of experience for us to lose. But the situation there for him is better for his family, kind of all the way around. And we're excited for him. It's not like he's still going to be in our community working, but we're disappointed that he's not going to be here. But we're looking forward to, you know, to continue working with Heath. He's done a good job for us. And that's the end of my report. If somebody has any questions.
Does anybody have questions, Greg? I'm sorry, you're muted.
I'm sorry. Could you talk a little bit about the security situation at Pinnacle Park? I know there were some break-ins recently up there.
There was, yeah. We're working on, we were having some problems with the camera up there, but Jake and I have been, we've had a little meeting and been working on maybe some solutions for that problem up there, and Jake's probably the better person to talk about the camera situation. But the problem with it is just that you've got all that, all that foliage, and it's really hard to get any kind of a signal for those cameras. So we're going to, we're working on trying to find a situation for that. But, you know, we had some cars broken through there, and we also had, and Highlands also had some cars broken into. Same kind of situation like Pearlhead Parking, like parking like that, that got hit as well. So our detective, Daniel Reed, he's working on we're getting with Highlands PD, and I haven't gotten an update today, today about it, but just trying to find out what, if anything, we've got there. But, but yeah, it's kind of rare that that happens, but it did happen. And so we're sort of trying to make sure that we're, that's part of this new position that's coming in. I've been working on writing out the responsibilities for what that looks like, and that's going to be one of them, is a more time downtown, which we have sadly been neglecting, in my opinion. More time downtown and more time in Pinnacle Park and that kind of thing. So, but yeah, we had some cars broken into, and they're working on it.
Thank you, Chris. Any other questions?
Oh, just, just want to say I'm doing my ride-along tonight, and I'm excited to do that.
Thank you, and thank you very much, Chief, and thank your whole crew for all they do.
Yeah, I'm looking, I just looked down at our stats. It looks like we've had, we, our officers have logged, it looks like in the last, since about our last meeting, they've logged about 20 annual checks at Pinnacle Park. So that means they've driven up there, looked around, and see what's going on and all that. So, you know, Pinnacle Park's one of those things where especially we get a camera going, that'll be really helpful, reliable camera, that'll be really helpful. But it's one of those things where if you're not right there, you know, it'd be hard to know if something's going on unless somebody tells us about it.
Yeah, I just remember several years ago where somebody actually put spikes in the ground, and
That's right.
Just a little bit concerned about.
We don't want that again, yeah, that's right.
Thank you. Next, we will move on to the Main Street report, and Paige sent to you the report. And I must say, it's, I just want to say to all of you from the chamber that took over that job last year, it's remarkable the things you've done, and I really appreciate and thank you for all of the work that y'all have all done. I think it really helped us during the pandemic. And we didn't, I don't know that our businesses suffered much, because there was a lot of advertisement out there on lots of websites that I think brought people in. So thank you for all that work. And now I'll ask you to do your report.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to start out with, we had another successful sidewalk sale on June 12th, and 21 of our businesses participated in that. We had street music with Shane Mead, and we got a lot of good coverage from the Silva Herald and the Smoky Mountain News, and lots of street traffic all day, and a lot of people were here from out of town. And we have just sent the Historic Heritage Walk for downtown Silva to the printers. Some of you may be familiar with this product. It sends people through town and shows them a lot of our historic sites. And we want to thank our Jackson County Tourism Development Authority for acquiring that file, the digital file from the Silva Herald. And then we updated it here in-house, and we all looked at it and updated some of the businesses and locations of our historic site. So that should be back in just a few weeks. This month, we completed our annual reports for Main Street and provided them to the Town Manager for review and submission. And we coordinated a Board of Directors' meeting on June 14th. We met down at the Bridge Park Pavilion. And we have continued to visit with businesses in our district and update their information in our database for the Main Street. And we have updated our Main Street website with our new Main Street credentials. And last week, we started helping to promote the Silva Pride event that's going to be on September 4th, so we're happy to do that. And we did it on the Chamber website as well, and that has turned out to be one of the most popular posts that we have put on the Main Street Facebook page, so that's exciting. I'll let Sandy take over from here.
Morning, everybody. Last Saturday night was Beach Night at Bridge Park. We gave out about 100 flowerlays to businesses that wanted them, and we had about 400 people attend the concert. So, and restaurants were busy, so that was really good. And then this Saturday night is going to be 80's Night at Bridge Park. So we're going to have tote bags and sunglasses and masks to give away. Those were provided by the NC Department of Public Health and Human Services. So this was no cost to the Main Street program for the band either, it was a Chamber initiative. And then to highlight some of the things that took place during our 2020-21 year, all year long, we promoted to spend local, consistently providing support for business owners during COVID. And we worked with EDC, SCC, Small Business Center to help our district. We also provided free brunch signs and crossworked with the TDA and the Chamber to cross-promote brunch in Silva and, and Saturdays in Silva. So those signs were a big hit. And then throughout the year, we organized three sidewalk sales. And we also had some individual promotions for Shop Small Saturday, St. Patty's Day, Mother's Day specials, Valentine's, and Holiday Cheer beer. And we also applied for a grant, it got approved, and those funds have been received by the town for a new bicycle rack.
Another thing we're very proud of is we built a new website for the Main Street Silva Association. So we're trying to keep it updated as much as possible, and we have improved the Facebook following and on social media, including Instagram, by 34%. And Sandy mainly worked on this, but we created a new district database, so people in the district can communicate with each other through email. There means, I'll pass it off to Julie.
Good morning. Some of the other highlights from the year, we did focus a lot on Mill Street, and we added some Holiday Cheer during the Christmas season. If you happen to have come to Beach Night the other night, you saw that the professional lights around the exterior of the pavilion are still there and on. It adds a lot of atmosphere down there, so thank you to Black Bear Tech for helping us with that and providing that. We organized two cleanups, mostly focusing on Mill Street. We definitely used some Main Street time in there as well, but we also focused a lot on Mill Street cleanups, providing planners and general cleanup. We organized about 10 sessions of live street music, starting in November with Shop Small Saturday, and continued until last Saturday during the sidewalks. So worked cooperatively with Silva Art and Design Committee on the awesome Holiday Window Competition. That's grown every year. We helped them cross-promote that, and that's always very successful, and love seeing that grow every single year. And most recently, of course, the Sandwich Competition, which Front Street take out one in Dillsborough, and again, through Silva Art and Design Committee, one of the committees under the Main Street program. We tried to stay in touch all year long with building owners that had empty spaces, either upstairs or downstairs, and an example would be David Schulman in Constant um, an example would be David Schulman in constant communication with David about the former People's Building and trying to help people, um, find those building owners and get them rented, doing the best we could on that all year long. We did meet the criteria to keep Silva, North Carolina, Main Street Town. We earned the accreditation. As Kelly mentioned to you, we updated the website with that accreditation. Paige has those logos. And one of the other things we highlighted all year long was Public Works. It was hard to choose one picture here. We had a lot of good pictures. Um, Humphrey almost made the cut there, Jake, but I just decided to fo- focus on some of your staff. They did a great job and we felt it was important to let people know that Public Works is doing a lot of things. One of their jobs is doing things downtown, but there's a lot of other things they're doing in between. But we wanted to highlight the efforts that they made all year long. So we hope that that helped and they were some of our more popular posts as well. Thank you so much. We appreciated this opportunity to be of service. Hope we helped during Paige's maternity leave and we appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Again, I want to thank, um, y'all for all of your, um, work. And are there any questions, uh, Kelly, Julie or Sandy? If not, then we will move on to the planning board report. And, um, what Paige gave me on that is the planning board is still working on, um, the zoning rewrite. They have, um, they're having extra meetings. They have a meeting this Tuesday night where they're going over and trying to get consistency in, um, our ordinances. So, um, that's all I have for that. Um, is there a TWASA report, David?
Yeah, our last meeting, we passed our, uh, budget for the upcoming year. Uh, I've sort of discussed those details. Previous TWASA reports, nothing changed in the budget since it was, uh, last discussed. There will be a rate increase on the base rate and system improvement charge increase. So we're just trying to cover all of our capital expenses without transferring from reserves to do so. And now that that's passed, we'll be moving back towards, uh, policy reviews. Uh, I got a sewer plant coming up in Cachers. Just typical water and sewer business.
Thank you, but we've all got to have it. Jake?
Mayor, I tried to sneak in before we moved on. Uh, I just want to offer my profound thanks to Julie, Sandy and Kelly. Uh, they've been phenomenal to work with and my department really appreciates their efforts to get these guys the recognition that I feel like they deserve. So they've done a phenomenal job and they're gonna, they're gonna be hard to replace. So that's all.
Thank you. Anybody?
I could throw in there too. They've been a, a great partner for the police department as well. It's kind of interesting that when I came here, I wouldn't have thought that the Chamber of Commerce would have been so integral in what the police do, but we actually worked together quite a bit and it's absolutely been a pleasure to work with them.
Thank you. Did anybody have questions of David on the TWASA report? Okay. Then, um, we will move on to our new business. Um, the first item on the agenda is to change the time of the July 15th, 2021 Planning Board Meeting to five o'clock. It's normally at 5:30. And again, this is a change so that they have extra time to be able to spend, um, going over the, with Withers Rabinell, the reports and the changes to the zoning. Um, is there a motion?
Make that motion.
Okay. Thank you, Mary. Any discussion? Then I'll ask Amanda to do the roll call.
Barbara?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Okay, that motion is approved. Um, next is the, um, approving the Fire Department Officers for, um, 2021 to 2022. And I apologize, I have too many papers here. And Amanda, can you read off the officers for me?
Sure. Chief is Mike Beck, First Assistant Chief Keith Buchanan, Second Assistant Chief Brian Wellman, Captain Ben Clausen, Captain Jesse Turner, Lieutenant Kevin Burl, Lieutenant Belinda Clausen, Safety Officer Michael Huffman, Chaplain Mike Farmer.
Thank you very much. Um, do I have a motion to approve the Fire Department Officers?
I'll be happy to make a motion.
Okay. We have multiple motions, so I'll take, um, Greg's. Um, is there any other discussion? Then Amanda, will you do the roll call?
Barbara?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I want to take this opportunity to thank all of the, um, Fire Department Officers and the volunteers. They, they do this just no pay. So I really appreciate all that they do for us and other places in the county.
Yeah, I second that. Thank you.
Thank you. Then we will move on, um, to our next item, which is a special event request, um, Innovation Brewing Alcohol at the Annual Hook Line and Drinker Festival. I don't see, um, anyone from, um, that did this request, but, um,
Mary, Julie's gonna do that.
Okay, Julie, can you? Uh, so is there anything you would like to tell us about this? I think we've done it for several years now.
Nothing new, nothing different, other than we've already met with our chief and another officer. We will hopefully be utilizing some of those new blockade things that Jake purchased this year. We've had fencing in the past and we'll definitely do whatever we need to do to fence it off. But hopefully we can use some of those orange and white blockade things to further define the area. So with very defined entry and exit, um, all carting is done by our breweries and they make those decisions to card people as they are the ones authorized to serve. So that is how we've done it in the past and it's worked very well. We'll have Freedom Taxi, um, around and all the wristbands also have Freedom Taxi on them as well, the number. So may I answer questions from three to seven on August 21st? That's a Saturday.
Thank you, Julie. Do I have a motion?
Make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Mary. We have a motion. Is there any other discussion or questions of Julie? Then I'll get Amanda to take the role.
Barbara? Greg?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
David?
Yep.
Thank you. That mo- motion is approved and that'll be a great event. One of our first ones coming up and, um, August, and then the greening up, I guess, is after that. So I'm looking forward to August. Um, next on our agenda is the Confederate Monument Resolution. And I believe, um, Ben, um, brought this up. So can you help us with this?
Sure thing. Thank you. Um, thank you. So I'm just going to go, um, and, uh, this is referring to the proposed changes, uh, the new plaques that the county wants to put on the, uh, on the plinth, uh, of the statue that sits in front of the courthouse uh, in the main focal point, uh, in downtown Silva. So I'm just going to read it and then I have a couple of things to say. So this is a resolution, uh, that, uh, that states, whereas the Jackson County Commissioners rejected the 2020 Town of Silva request to relocate Silva Sam to a location outside of the town limits. Whereas the new plaques and language on the plinth fail to recognize the state's historical legacy associated with the Jim Crow South of the early 1900s. Whereas the presence of the statue in the most prominent location in Silva Town Limits implies the Town of Silva supports the Confederate cause. Whereas the statue in its current location will continue to draw controversy and strife and create a threat to public safety within the town limits for residents and visitors. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Board, the Silva Town Board of Commissioners strongly rejects the county's plan to alter the appearance and the meaning of Silva Sam and leaving it in its current location. Why I did this, this is, this is not about controversy. It's not about creating controversy. It's not about creating division. It's the fact that there's something in our town that does all of those on its own and will continue to do that. We've had lots of discussion on it. We've had people marching. We've, we've, I see last night, every Wednesday, I guess it's somebody's turn to watch the statue. There's a big pickup truck that sits up, up in the parking lot and just idles there and waits. And it waits for someone who one day is gonna take a shot at the statue or something. Someone's going to get hurt. And, you know, it's, it just doesn't have to happen. And, um, you know, the, the county, the, they say that, you know, they, they, that it's a compromise because nobody's happy about it. And just because nobody's happy about a decision doesn't imply that's a good decision, or indeed it was a compromise. And, uh, you know, the Jackson County Commissioners keep stating that they have to continue, consider the entire county. But the statute is disproportionately affecting our town, uh, more so than the rest of the county. And, you know, finally, you know, the, these things are hard to bring up and it's a hard discussion to have. But, you know, the thing that makes me motivated to, to bring up something like this is, you know, what will your grandkids read about you? I just keep seeing that sign and hearing it and, and it's so important to be on the right side of history. And I feel that rejecting this and accepting this, um, resolution I'm bringing to you today is being on the right side of history. So thanks.
You're muted, Linda.
Thank you. I was trying and I wanted to remind everybody, if you're not talking, to please mute because I heard some knocking then. So I'm sorry. Do we have a motion, um, to accept this resolution?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution.
Thank you, David. Is there any further discussion?
I have further discussion.
Okay, Greg has his hand up first. So Greg?
Well, I'll just keep this short. Um, we did this in 2020. We asked a very simple request. We did not ask to destroy the sculpture. We did not ask, um, for, for the controversy, but the Town of Silva should reject discrimination in all of its forms. And this is the most obvious personification of discrimination that I can think of. Um, and I think that the language that the county came up with is, it's nonsensical. You have, um, an insurrectionist soldier from a vanquished army now representing all veterans of all wars. It makes absolutely no sense to me. So I'll vote yes on this.
Barbara, did you have something you wanted to say?
I represent a lot of our locals. And they have relatives that were in that war. This was supposed to be a memorial not to the Confederacy or to the, both, we had both soldiers in our county that worked for both. I've talked to numerous people and they really, uh, one thing in the county property and they have the choice to make their decision. I know that it goes, yeah, gay and what some people think about it, but it is their property. And I think they're trying their best to try to make, uh, but I think we cannot rewrite history. I'm sorry that it happened. But I cannot go against a lot of the locals who have loved ones that served. And it's supposed to be, it was the mothers that had that monument made for sons and that, uh, worked, that really so were for the Confederacy or the Union. So to, uh, remind people of that. And maybe it was a bad time in history, but I'm just, I don't think we can rewrite history. Do better now and treat each other with respect. And I, I am very familiar with the black community and I have not had complaints from them about. A lot of people say, well, we never even paid any attention to this until it was brought up. So, you know, that's just my personal opinion. But again, the county owns the property.
Thank you. Any other, David?
Yeah, I mean, I know we've discussed this a lot, so I'll, I'll keep it brief. But yeah, I, and I've said this before and I'll, I'll say it again. I, I think the writing, writing E Pluribus Unum on there is one of the most idiotic things I've ever seen. Uh, it's, it's like the county commissioners didn't learn anything from this conversation that we had, this whole community discussion. I mean, the problem with these monuments is they came up during the Jim Crow era and they attempted to change the whole narrative about what the Confederacy stood for. And, and Jackson County is just perpetuating that same sentiment. Um, this is the lost cause. This is rewriting history. You know, this is how you rewrite history. You write E Pluribus Unum on a Confederate statue. Um, their discussion on the matter, I found they were completely unprepared and uneducated on the matter. Um, and I see they've, they've really gotten nowhere on it. So yeah, I completely reject their, uh, attempt at a compromise. So thanks for doing the, uh, resolution, Ben.
Any other comments or discussion?
I would just want to add that, uh, I think in the statue case or anything in life, whatever you focus on expands based on your perception, your reality. Um, I've never called it Silva Sam ever. Uh, that was a, a new term that, that came into my realm last year. I echo Barbara and the sentiment that it was to these mothers for those who served. And I know we don't see it equally. I'm not a, not MD, I'm not an engineer, I'm not an art professor. I see it differently. I respectfully see it differently. Uh, as individuals, I know that this is really, um, a powerful issue for each of you, Commissioner Gueni, Commissioner Nestler, Commissioner McPherson. And I ask that you individually go to the county as a citizen of the county, since this is a county issue now. Uh, resolutions can divide a board, resolutions can make things awkward and uncomfortable. And I, I support that this is your perception and I support that this is how you feel. And I also support how Barbara and I represent a different demographic and how we feel. And I don't think in any way we are trying to be disrespectful to you or those that feel the way you feel. But I do ask that you come to the county on an individual basis and express your concerns. That's all.
Thank you, Mary. Thanks to everyone for your comments. Anybody have any more comments?
I just want to say that I did reach out to the county and this is the solution that, that's coming before us. So um, they're obviously not hearing, uh, from constituents that I'm hearing from. So.
Yeah, as well. I, I did as well. I've actually sat down with Gail.
Thank you. If there's no other discussion, um, I will call for the vote. Amanda.
Barbara? I can't hear you, Barbara.
No.
Greg?
Yes.
Mary?
No.
Ben?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
The motion carries, um, three, four, two against. I look forward to the days where we can all work together and have consensus again instead of issues dividing us, but that being said, we will move on to our next item on the agenda, which is downtown parking. And, um, I see Laurie Bryson on our call who sent, um, an email. So, Laurie, if you want to just, um, share your email that you sent to the M S S A and that we did get a copy of, um, and tell us what, um, is going on.
Thank you, Mary. Um, I have, um, I'm inquiring about keeping our outside dining area. As a business, we greatly benefited from the opportunity to use these three spaces located directly in front of our storefront to offer our customers additional seating options. With the mandates being removed, we would like to ask your consideration in letting us even rent these spaces for this foreseeable future. Our proposal is that Balsam Falls Brewing is willing to pay rent for said spaces, which will provide an additional revenue source of the town of Silva. We do own the building, um, so I don't have to get additional permission from, um, a landlord or anything like that. Uh, we would provide peace of mind to patrons still concerned with the COVID-nineteen issues by allowing them a space to sit outside and distance themselves from the general public. The outside area would attract additional foot traffic by piquing interest of passing drivers who would see people enjoying themselves at a local venue, causing additional foot traffic to local businesses, whereas they might drive through town without a second thought. Uh, Balsam Falls would take responsibility of making the space more visually pleasing as well as maintaining the area. The space, it will also provide an additional option for dog lovers looking to get out with their four-legged friends. There's also, back in July of two thousand nineteen, um, there was parking that was addressed, uh, by Publicizing Locations. There are six hundred and ninety existing spaces, I'm sure you all know how many spaces we have. And they were also looking at adding additional spots as possible. I am only asking for three spots in front of our storefront, so I'm not sure how much that that would impact the public. Uh, I would be more than happy to help educate, um, patrons and the citizens, people coming in, tourists, whoever it is, uh, so that they know where those additional spaces are, um, because there are so many of them. And, uh, I hope, uh, I thank you all for your consideration. I've also reached out to the North Carolina DOT. Um, I called Raleigh and they referred me to, uh, local Chris Lee. So, I've sent him an email as well to see if, uh, we can work something out as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Laurie. And thank you for your business on down, in downtown. Um, I would, um, ask if there's some discussion on this, um, please. We've had to remove, um, the others have all been moved. It is, um, it, we did get special permission from DOT, um, to use their, um, area because that is, uh, a state road and the parking places are too. So, I'm not sure how you could pay rent to us when we don't own them, so. I would ask for further discussion.
Uh, I, I'd like Eric to weigh in because I'm a little confused, you know, being that this is a state highway, how we could even, you know, I mean, we had to essentially ask DOT for the permissions to use those spaces before, and that was seemingly done under an exception due to the pandemic. So, I mean, is it even possible that we can lend out public parking spots on a state highway to a, uh, individual business? And in addition to that, uh, question, um, you know, my second question would be, I understand, yes, three slots, uh, is not very significant, but, um, what if everybody wants to do this? And how do we accommodate those lost spaces? But first to Eric, I think, on that legal question.
Yeah, so I think that does, uh, present quite a few legal problems. The first is, um, letting space that you don't own. Um, if you close that, that, that could be tantamount to closing that portion of the street. Uh, street closing triggers other legal ramifications, which is that when you, when you close a street within a municipality, the adjoining or the lands that, that were closed are supposed to revert to the adjoining landowner, so that would, that could possibly trigger that. I don't think we have the standing to enter into a contract. There is, in order, i- if we were to do it, um, in order to, in order to achieve the greatest amount or the fair market value of that rented space, I think you'd probably have to let it for a public bid. If you start letting that for a public bid, um, then the highest bidder is gonna get it. Um, highest bidder may not be Balsam Falls, it could be a competitor, it could be somebody else. In which case, they could then control who gets to be there, who gets to park there, who gets to, to use that space. And that's a public space that you're now, um, privatizing. And so that, that results in other legal complications. Plus of the fact that, probably not legal, but just as far as an argument that's going to be made by other people, is that the town's already paying other private places and has spent a large amount of money on parking stalls and spaces. So, if you now are limiting that, you're effectively taking away from the other parking spaces that the town has already, um, paid or owns, uh, for purposes of making sure that our downtown businesses are frequented and that people do have, um, access to those businesses. So, I think that the legal complications are pretty substantial if, if we start, if, if we, if the board's interested in doing that.
So, we closed down that section of Spring Street. We didn't have to let that to public bid. The section between Mill and Main, uh, the one lane, we closed that one lane off completely.
It's, it's still, you're talking about the, all the new parking stalls that were added on Mill Street?
Now, I believe he's talking about Spring Street between Mill and Main, we made that one way, but that's a town street.
And we didn't, we didn't lease it, we didn't lease it out.
Okay, gotcha.
David, that street's not closed either, it just went to one way. So, it's still an open, active, power bill eligible street, it just got reduced in size.
So, so, I mean, what about the thought, so like, at that last block of Main Street, you can't take a left on the spring, and we have those barricades up there, so it kinda blocks that left lane, you know, from, you, you can't travel down that left lane, uh, you know, across those two blocks. Um, I mean, couldn't we do something like that on that, uh, block like we did on Mill Street where the, um, like in front of White Moon and those places, it's one lane. We turned the second lane into the parking lane. They didn't get the sidewalk extended because it was too narrow there, but I mean, we could do something like that, and that wouldn't trigger a road closure then. And we could extend dining potentially, I mean, it's just one thought. I mean, we'd lose a lot of parking in that case, but.
My suggestion would be to explore that and revisit after there's been time to do due diligence. I would encourage y'all not to take action on that in, in this meeting.
The town was really gracious in making this opportunity available to our restaurants when the limited capacity occurred from the executive order two fifteen. I think we're past the thirty days, I think the other businesses have been, uh, respectful of the grace that the town gave. I think I'm not interested in setting the precedence for this moving forward or to the neighboring businesses that have been accommodating. When you have the parking places in front of your business, you have them for dining, where do your patrons park? They park in front of other businesses. Everybody has been very accommodating and generous during this time that has been crippling to our businesses. And now I think it's time to come back to a fair game and to be respectful of our neighbors. And I'll go back to being a business within our business location. These are B-one businesses that have a B-one footprint. And within your footprint, you've chosen to do business here. If, if you wanna have outside seating, which I think you do, you've developed it within your footprint, and that's wonderful. The Cut Lounge has done that, Lulu's has done that, Lazy Hiker's done that. And I would respectfully ask that Balsam Falls go back to that space as well.
Thank you, Mary.
There is, and I'm sorry, there is one other legal issue, and that is the, the alcohol, the, the, there is a town ordinance, um, against, against drinking or consuming alcohol on, on public property. And that ordinance would likewise have to be revised if, um, if we were gonna make this a permanent type of issue where you could, have alcohol or open containers on public property. Um, and then that triggers the issue, is, does that mean it's only for this, this one area? Or is it, um, wide, anyway, there, there's just other legal complications on top of the, uh, the parking issues that are involved.
Yes, I believe we waived those when we, um, were allowed because of the pandemic and the unusual situations. We waived those ordinances, um, during that time. We would have to put them back in place, David.
So, it sounds like we don't wanna entertain renting parking spots, that doesn't sound very realistic. But I would encourage us to kinda get a little creative, I mean, I think we do want to encourage, um, outside dining more downtown. Cause I have really enjoyed seeing that, and I think it's been really good for businesses and patrons. So, I would just, uh, maybe try to brainstorm some creative ways to make that happen on bump outs. And, you know, through use of the sidewalk space, if we can increase that usage, it seems like a better solution than parking spaces at this time.
And I agree with that because I was hoping, um, Paige will come back with some ideas about, um, uses for the American Rescue Plan monies where we're supposed to help small businesses, um, in our town. And, um, maybe we can do that by having more outside dining and outside sidewalk sales and things like that. Because it definitely gives the town a more festive look. Every place I've been where there is outside dining and stuff, it just looks more friendly. So, um, other comments?
Yeah, I, I also wanted, uh, 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 a second that, it's like, i- if, we can just kinda keep thinking of ways to, um, to, to make it so we can have, um, some outdoor space like that, um, outdoor dining. It, you know, it's nice, it's like, it's, it's great, and the, the Balsam Falls little area is awesome, I walk by there and, um, you know, but I completely understand it, it, it is problematic, uh, you know, from, really, just, it's almost a moot point to dis- discuss it because of the kinda legal ramifications what, um, what Eric was, uh, referring to. But, um, yeah, there's probably some great ideas we had, I mean, I remember when I was living in London, a lot of the, um, the, a lot of the small towns, um, on the weekends would, they would shut down the main street, the high street, they call it. And, uh, it was just a big walking space. And, uh, I mean, uh, that, that's just one idea, but it was awesome, everyone's just kinda cruising around down there. Uh, there were no cars and, uh, yeah, it, it was fantastic. So, um, I think we need to, really need to keep thinking about ways to, to get people outside like that.
Any other comments? So, Laurie, if you and other businesses will bear with us, um, we, I think we all want to increase, um, presence of places outside. Um, I'm just, it sounds like we can't do it with the parking places, but we'll see. Um, and we'll get Paige to revisit this and Jake. Um, if you'll talk with her after she comes back from her meeting to see what ideas. And we're still waiting for the Treasury Department to tell, um, cities and towns how they can use the money that they're gonna get, um, to help nonprofits and small businesses. So, just bear with us if you can.
Thank you, Mary.
Okay. Any other? Then we'll move on to.
Do we need to, do we need to just comment that, uh, the ordinance, the executive order has been closed, the thirty days have passed and it needs to come down?
What's the pleasure of the board? Is that a motion or do we just table it or?
Laurie wants to speak.
I'm making that into a motion.
Okay. Laurie, did you need to say something else?
Yes, I have reached out to North Carolina Department of Transportation to Chris Lee. Can I at least wait to hear his feedback and present it back? If possible.
Jake?
Laurie, I've spoken with Chris Lee, the encroachment agreement that we entered into at the time is valid until terminated by either, um, either member of the agreement, which in this case would be Balsam Falls and the town of Silva. So, whoever chooses to nullify the contract first in both, either you or the town of Silva, um, is within their rights to do that. And the DOT is leaving that between the town of Silva and Balsam Falls. So, that, that goes to the pleasure of the board, and that's the DOT's stance on it currently.
Okay.
We didn't have to take any official action to end the agreements with the other restaurants, right? But didn't staff have the authority to do that?
Yeah, the, the, the grace period was offered so that Laurie would have time to address you guys and pu- and put this issue in front of y'alls. We've had, she's been trying to get on the agenda for a while now, and we've had really busy, really crowded agendas. And she was gracious enough to push it until now, so because of that, we offered the grace period, uh, until you guys could, could vote and decide.
Yeah, okay, I mean, that sounds reasonable, um, I'm a little unclear then on what motion you made, Mary.
I made the motion that we not, uh, accept this request to continue parking in front of this business and not set this precedence.
But, but do we have to, is that something, again, I don't know if we actually vote on that. Can we get a ruling?
Yeah.
Well, I, from what I'm hearing from Jake is, I mean, I don't actually have that agreement in front of me, I didn't actually receive the individual agreements. But if, if, um, if we need to terminate the agreement to, to make sure that, that, that the streets open back up, then I think we need to go ahead and terminate the agreement for the use of that space. Yes, I think we should go ahead and entertain the motion to make it clear that we're terminating the, um, agreement, um, for the use of that parking space.
Okay, um, so we have a motion on the floor, um, any further discussion?
I guess I'll just weigh in a little bit since we're, since we're gonna.
Greg?
Vote on this, um, so I, I need to second what Mary said, I've been hearing from, uh, my tenants. Uh, that is right in front of, uh, the barber shop, which people come in and out of every day. I'm sure, uh, Livingston would like to have us parking back as well, so I just think in the interest of fairness, we need to put it back the way that it was. And I know you're my neighbor, Laurie, and, um, I, I really like seeing people out there, but, um, we're taking away parking from others, other businesses.
Laurie?
Um, in regards to that, um, I, I do know that there are, that some of the resistance that we have gotten is, um, from tenants that like to park in those spaces. So, I would request that maybe we have to, um, be a little more diligent on employees and staff parking in those spaces in front of those businesses as well. And make sure that they are available for visitors and tourists as well.
I'll make sure that my seventy-six-year-old parents do not park to unload and reload their vehicles for more than thirty minutes, Laurie.
I'm not speaking of unloading, I'm speaking of parking throughout the day, and I wasn't signaling anybody out, I was just saying that it does happen, that's all.
My tenants are also aware of the ordinances. And so are my kids.
Thank you for all of the, um, comments, um. It's now time for us to. It's now time for us to vote, so I will ask Amanda to do the roll call.
Barbara?
Legalization of this, I think that I, I will have to vote no because the town is responsible legally, so.
Um, so are you voting for Mary's? Um, to terminate the, to terminate the, okay.
So, okay, so that would be a yes vote.
I'm sorry, yes.
Okay. Um, Greg?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Ben?
Uh, yes.
David?
Yeah.
David?
I said yes. I don't really, I mean, we haven't had board action to terminate other people, so I'm a little confused as to exactly what we're doing here. But, uh, yes, if that helps with the legal.
That was weird.
I know, me too. Like, I almost voted no, just because I don't know if it's something we should be voting on, but just to
I believe the
Party mistake.
Excuse me, I believe the other residents actually asked, uh, the restaurants asked for it to be removed. So they, they were one of the people in the agreement. Is that right, Jake?
Yeah, the, the agreement was between the Town of Silva and each individual business owner. And it states that either the business owner or the town can terminate at their discretion. It would appear that it's the town terminating at this time. Hurry your vote.
Is, is that clear to everybody?
It's my understanding that everybody else voluntarily terminated. So if there's somebody else who hasn't voluntarily terminated, then we would need to make sure that, um, those are terminated too. So I, but I understand that there's only, and my understanding is there's only one that didn't voluntarily terminate, so that's.
Innovation also has some, but they aren't directly in the right of way, so it's a little bit different agreement. But it's mostly just a loaning of barricades, but.
They're, it's their property, right, Jake?
It's, uh, yeah, yeah-ish. It's not public parking. So that, that makes it a little bit different. Those barricades will be collected as well in the spirit of fairness.
I just wanted to make it clear, it feels a little contentious. I, I think Laurie, you're willing to give up these spots. This, it was just extended so you could come to the board and have this discussion with us. And I'm sure you will voluntarily remove your, uh, seating at this time. We're just doing this as a procedural sort of thing.
If the town wants to terminate it, then yes, I will give it up.
And i- is this specifically for that spot? I mean, isn't, I, I'm sorry, just like, just to clarify, um, what we're voting on again. I mean, uh, is this, this is for every, this is for all that temporary parking throughout the town? Even though the only one left, I think, is, is Balsam. But this, I, I want to make it sure that this, this, this is terminating everything. Uh, the, the whole, this is the end of it, everything. So, yeah, I, I also want to make sure it's just not like aimed directly at one business owner.
Jake?
That, you're correct, Ben.
Um, did we finish our vote? Okay, so the motion carries and Laurie, I would, yes.
I'm sorry. So will that be, like, is that going to happen immediately? Or can we keep it through the weekend or like, what is, what is the preference?
I think it would depend on when Jake can get out there to retrieve our barricades.
I mean, unless the board has a special request, I think it is not unreasonable to give Laurie a, a, a reasonable amount of time to collect her tables and stuff like that. That, that would be the board's decision as well.
We'll just, let's just leave it at staff's discretion. Jake can work with her to get this stuff out and whatever time he feels reasonable.
Okay, Laurie, I'll, I'll touch base with you at the conclusion of the board meeting today, and we'll figure something out.
I agree with that. If everybody else does, is that okay? Okay. And Laurie, I do want to say, I think the town will be trying to work, um, with businesses like yours to help increase, um, some outside presence. Um, I would like to see us have grants for awnings, grants for tables, grants for, if we could use umbrellas. I don't know. I just, um, think that, um, something will be coming in the next few months. And, um, thank you for coming to our meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody.
All right. Thank you. All right, next on our agenda is, um, a presentation from Smoky Mountain Housing Partnership, Heather Boyd. If you're available.
Hi, good morning. So I'm Heather Boyd, um, Executive Director of Smoky Mountain Housing Partnership. We are the Affordable Housing Division of Mountain Projects. Um, I may have talked to some of you briefly, but with the pandemic, I haven't got to meet everybody in person yet. So I started in November of, um, last year, so we're excited to be here and thank you so much to come and share some exciting things that we have going on. So I'm going to share my screen to do a little small presentation. Um, and then if anyone has any questions afterwards, just let me know. So again, we are Smoky Mountain Housing Partnership, um, the Affordable Housing Division of Mountain Projects. Mountain Projects is a community-based nonprofit organization founded in nineteen sixty-five as a community action agency that provides vital services to the elderly disadvantaged and general public in western North Carolina. Mountain Projects has a variety of, I think we have different programs, so there's a variety of senior services along with food service, transportation, mountain strong prevention, central service intake, health insurance counselors, and children's services. Um, our primary focus area is Haywood and Jackson Counties. So in two thousand nineteen, Smoky Mountain Housing Partnership was formed. And it's a mission of Smoky Mountain Housing Partnership to improve the quality of life for families living in the communities of the great Smoky Mountains by advocating for and creating workforce housing opportunities. We strive to assist residents in the area through programs that include financial literacy, down payment assistance, rental assistance, credit counseling, and home purchasing. Um, as everyone's aware, there is a very big need for affordable and workforce housing. Um, housing is considered affordable when someone is not paying more than thirty percent of their family's income um, on housing-related expenses, because that then in turn makes them cost burdened. So in Jackson County, over thirty percent of households are cost burdened. And we face a lot of different obstacles. Um, again, we have aging population, poverty and low-income rentals, lack of easy-to-develop land and high cost of construction, regional and national market impacts, lack of high-paying jobs, um, second home and BRBOs. So we've got a lot of challenges as far as rentals and homeownerships for a lot of the clients that we see in our communities. Currently, we have a staff of three. Um, again, we have Mountain Projects and we have a very active board. It's supportive and has done amazing things for us, um, especially laying a very strong foundation. So currently, I'm the Executive Director. Then we have Joey Massey, our Construction Supervisor, and Tara Abchar, our newest Housing Counselor. We have a second Housing Counselor who is a current employee of Mountain Projects, who will be starting next month, um, as a counselor, um, along with a Self-Sufficiency Coordinator. So we're super excited. Um, we were blessed to receive a great grant from Dogwood Health Trust that's able to bring on some capacity building and further our programs and services. So with our Home Ownership Center, we became a HUD-approved Housing Counseling Agency in April. Um, so we will be doing workshops in in-person, one-on-one, or remote one-on-one counseling services. We work with clients for mortgage delinquency and default resolution counseling, financial budgeting and credit repair, home improvement and rehab, post-purchase workshops, home buyer education, rental counseling, and we'll refer folks as needed. So our ultimate goal is not to get somebody in a home, but have them be successful long-term. So the skills and the education that come with that are vital for our clients. We have several different homeownership opportunities. First, we have our self-help program. And this is a sweat equity program. It's similar to what the habitats do, but we work collectively in groups of four to six. And the homeowners contribute sixty-five percent of the labor towards their homes. They don't need any construction experience. And we have a staff, um, construction staff on site to teach them the skills that they need to be successful along with bringing in that community sense of, um, knowing your neighbors. If you need a cup of sugar, you go next door. If you are going out of town or your kids are outside playing, you have that community sense and you've got your, your village. So that, you know, there, it, things are safer, everybody's aware of who they are, and it just, it creates bonds. I'm currently with self-help. You know, a bit familiar, we have five lots off Second Avenue. We have five homes under contract. Um, we are working with our engineer to extend the water lines now. Um, along with that, we, we have some funding from Dogwood Health Trust to help offset some of the rising material costs. Twasa has been great. They're going to help us with some permit fees and some in-kind services. Jackson County is contributing to this project as well. And I'm actually meeting with, um, Paige next week to kind of discuss how the Town of Silva and different things might be able to, to factor in, and we can really help more clients out that way. We have also workforce housing, um, that we'll be developing. Currently, we have thirty-three lots in Bethel Village. That's in Haywood County. Um, we have recently started construction on two homes, and those financing will be offered through, um, conventional lenders, but we'll be leveraging them with down payment assistance. Um, and, and just my personal opinion on affordable housing, we can't build a house cheaper than the next person. We want to have a quality, sa- safe, affordable home that's energy efficient and it's going to provide shelter for this family for a long time to come. So the biggest part of affordable housing that I found is the leveraging piece. Um, you know, once you can take and leverage different resources is how you make something attainable and affordable. So for example, on our workforce housing, we have, um, some homes that'll potentially be sold for two hundred and thirty-eight thousand. We can leverage up to forty percent of that, which is a difference of ninety thousand dollars, which would take a house that was going to have a twelve-hundred-dollar payment down to a house that has an eight-hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar payment with no private mortgage insurance and not three to twenty percent down out of pocket. Um, with direct purchase, we work with USDA. So for folks that don't have the time or the physical ability to build, or they're just not looking to do new construction, they can work with a realtor or their own general contractor, and they still get the same financing benefits as if they were going through the self-help program. Um, and that includes one hundred percent financing, no down payment required, as long as the loan-to-value is there. Um, closing costs can be financed in. Loan terms are thirty-three to thirty-eight years. The current interest rate is two-point-five, and it can be reduced to one percent to create payment assistance. Um, so we're really excited about being able to bring these services out. Um, and then we will be working on a rehab program in the near future to where we can rehab existing homes and make them quality, um, bring up the communities, and help more families that way as well. Back to what I was mentioning with down payment assistance. Um, the next slide is just an example of what the leveraging would look like. And the income limits, this is based off of Haywood County. Um, so we're working with these families that are eighty percent or less of area median income. And again, if you factor in the, the availability of doing forty percent leveraged funds, say we have a house that's two hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Um, we are a member partner with North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, so we can do twenty percent of the purchase price with them. We can do, um, a flat thirty thousand with mountain housing opportunities. And then with a consortium, there's a potential to leverage a little bit more there. Um, and everything's still in the works with the consortium, um, but I'm very excited about it. Um, our Board Chair, Don McGowan, kind of rallied for that to get started and has worked really hard. So it's going to be a great resource for the nonprofits, for the municipalities around us. It's just going to bring a lot of resources and availability to our communities. Um, so again, that would take the, you know, a twelve-hundred-dollar a month payment down to eight-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars, which would allow that family to have more quality of life, pay for health insurance, do something nice and some sports with their kids. So it's really important, um, that we utilize those resources that we have. Again, with North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, if they're working with USDA, they can do ten percent of the purchase price. If they're working with a conventional lender, they can do twenty percent. We have a fifteen-county service area for that, and this is a deferred payment, non-forgivable mortgage with a zero percent interest rate that it can increase someone's purchase power or reduce their first mortgage amount. Um, with that being said, even though it's not forgivable, if a house is sold, that money goes back into the pot to help the next family, or they don't make any payments until their first mortgage is paid off. And they will save money over the life of the loan because they will not be paying any interest on that portion of the proceeds. Mountain Housing Opportunities, they have a service area about four counties. Uh, um, and they do a flat of thirty thousand dollars. And the way we work with them is they are the complete funder. We help the clients complete the paperwork because we have that rapport with them. And then we kind of pass it along to their organization, but they have been wonderful to work with as well. Um, and then again, the consortium funds will be coming available in the near future. And then once we have some more details on, um, how those funds can be utilized and how they can factor in and help our clients, we'll be sure to add some information on that. Does anybody have any questions?
Hey, David.
Thanks for coming and giving the presentation. Um, we, we were given a presentation by Sarah Thompson and Southwest Regional Commission, um, a while back about what we can do to increase housing opportunities in our areas. And one of the things she said was buy, buy land. Um, and, um, so I looked at what land the Town of Silva already owned, because I didn't think we really had the budget to be buying more land. Um, and I looked at the county, uh, owned land and town limits too, and I found quite a bit of stuff. And so I was, um, wondering, okay, so say we have this land and we want to use it for housing. Well, we, I mean, it's hard for the Town of Silva to just give it to somebody. So trying to find like a partnership with someone that could take over that process and try to get more of these housing opportunities available to people in Jackson County. Um, would your organization be a good fit for something like that if we identified some vacant town-owned or county-owned lots?
Yeah, I think that would be a great partnership, and we could collaborate and bring some resources to that to, to really help your key community to be able to stay where they're at. So, you know, North Carolina is one of the lowest-paid teaching states. Um, so we've definitely got to find ways to keep these key members here, or they're going to be uprooted and they're going to have to chase lower rents and move to other states, so. Yeah.
And what, what would be like more of an ideal, so like, uh, you know, I was able to find like a handful of small lots that would be good for like, you know, two-bedroom, one-bedroom houses. There's also a couple of larger vacant lots that would be more suitable for like apartments or, um, you know, a small residential development. Is that also within your scope?
Mountain Projects did do some tax credits in the past with multi-family. That's definitely something that we're looking to get back into. Um, we are currently working with some other organizations that are interested in doing, um, some different services with multi-family. Um, Givenza States is, is really looking out right now for some senior housing, so that's something that we're looking to partner with. Um, and I know in Jackson County, um, I, you know, I, I hear a lot about how a lot of the housing is for students, which is great, but we have the local community members that also need housing and affordable housing. So, um, we definitely want to bring all the resources we can to help with any type of development. Um, and it could be, you know, my primary focus is homeownership, but if it's somebody that needs something worth rentals or home repairs, that's an area that we work with too, as far as our counseling center. Um, and we can work with our home repair department, and we always try to look for more resources and funding to bring to the table so that we can assist more families. Um, but we are always open to look at anything as long as our capacity's there and we can partner with folks. Um, we just, we love being able to help the community.
All right, well, I'm going to reach out to the county then on some of these lots, and maybe we can kind of get together, um, with Dawn Adams or someone from the county, uh, you know, someone from Silva, someone from the county, and, uh, someone from your organization. And I get some talks moving. Okay, great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Heather?
Yeah, I just want to say thanks a lot, you know, um, I think folks are, are working in businesses to get affordable housing built, are, are passionate about the work they do, and, um, I appreciate what you're doing and appreciate you coming to us.
Thank you so much.
And I'll add to that thank you, and, um, thanks to Mountain Projects that has been around for fifty or more years. So thank you for all y'all do. So thank you for all y'all do.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is um, the Pinnacle Park Foundation Memorandum of Understanding. You have it in your packet. Um, and I believe that Eric has um, looked over it and Jay has approved it. Um, any, what are any comments from either of you?
I don't remember.
Hey, um, uh, just a, uh, one or two comments, if I may. Uh, thank you for allowing me to, to be before you this morning. Eric, one of the things that I told you the other day was that it looked good to me, but I, as I was looking through it this morning, we need to renumber it. So um, number one is background objectives, and then we have another, number one, authority and obligations. And what I would do is just number all of those, so it'd go one, two. Uh, acceptance of authority would be three, communications four, et cetera, uh, to finish it on, out, make those corrections. The, uh, and then I've got a couple of comments about um, the effectiveness of this. And uh, so if, y'all give me five minutes. Um, one of the things that we want to do is to do the um, the biodiversity survey. Uh, and that would fall under what is now um, numbered uh, on the second page, one A, uh, Roman numeral one. Uh, and what we want to do, and we've already made plans to do this, uh, assuming this is going to be passed by the board, uh, is Dr. Matthews and Dennis Desmond and I plan on meeting uh, tomorrow to work on the RFP that we would put out there. And we would bring that RFP uh, back to the board and say, this is what we're planning on putting out there. Uh, of course, my board has to meet and approve the final version of the MOU, and that'll be on the fifth of, of uh, July. So um, I'm going to go ahead and, and do some of the initial work with Dr. Matthews and, and Dennis Desmond. And hopefully, uh, everybody's going to be happy with the final version on the fifth, and we'll just have made some other uh, 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 work. Um, so um, if that's okay, then that's what we're going to be doing as soon as uh, as we can, probably starting tomorrow afternoon. So, uh, other than that, um, I, I do want to say thank you to Chief Hatton for uh, uh, patrolling at Pinnacle Park, that's really important. And then, uh, last, did I hear that, that there's going to be a greening up on the mountains uh, later on this summer?
Yes, the last Saturday in August, the twenty-sixth, I believe.
Then we definitely um, need to have a presence at that. Uh, so uh, we'll see if we can't get a booth together so we can have some people uh, to man that and, and help people understand uh, more about Pinnacle Park.
And Jay, I'm going to resend what I think is the final version, because you were talking about numbers. Mine all have numbers, and I think the one before the board has numbers. Let me just resend it to you to make sure we're looking at the same one.
I don't see any duplicate number one on my copy.
Okay, well, this is what you, you, this is one of the versions you sent me. I might not have looked at the last version, so as long as it's numbered, okay, that'll be fine.
So are you asking us to hold off?
Um, no, no, I'm not. I, I won't, I'd like to vote on this so we can move on.
All right. Um.
And if I could.
Motion to accept this memorandum of understanding.
And. Yeah, yeah, and just one comment first, um, Jay, because the original MOU had the language of the, doing the biodiversity uh, study, the botanical study. And we had some discussions on that, and we decided it seemed odd to have like a specific request in the MOU. Um, and, you know, once we do the biodiversity survey, um, it'll, and it's done, you know, there's no reason for it to continue to be in the MOU. So we decided the MOU was just like, this is for the, you know, we will be taking, uh, you know, recommendations by Pinnacle Park Foundation. And that I just saw as being one of the recommendations. So um, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the MOU as presented.
Thank you, David. Is there further discussion? Hearing, no further discussion.
No discussion, sorry, just real quick, um, yeah, I just wanted to say um, look forward uh, to the Pinnacle Park Foundation, you know, look, working with the board and moving forwards and um, really finding the best way uh, for Pinnacle Park to, to serve the town and, and be part of our town. Um, and so I'm excited about the future.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? Amanda, will you take the role?
Barbara.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
Ben.
Yes.
Thank you, the motion passes.
Thank you very much.
And Jay, I would just like to say to you again, I know we've thanked you before, but thank you for your years of work on this. And um, I read some of the attachments, and especially the Brief History of Pinnacle Park. Is that your, are you the author of that?
Uh, yes, that appeared in the, in the Silva Herald a cup, well, four years ago on the anniversary of the uh, National Park System in the United States of America. So uh, I can't remember who asked me to do that, but uh, that was just to, to let everybody know that we were part of that national movement right here in our little hometown.
Well, I really appreciate it, and as I read it again, it's um, like, you know, you can get on the trail from, um, and go um, from there to the mountain of, to Seize Trail at Water Rock, all the way to Jockey Ridge in the Outer Banks. So um, it's, it is history, and I think this should go on our um, town webpage, because it is a lot of information about Pinnacle Park. So thank you.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
That concludes our.
David has something.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, sorry, so we kind of, we kind of uh, tabled the discussion of the biodiversity study in lieu of getting the MOU in place, but is that something, Jay, you would need? Um, I mean, yeah, do you need official authority from the town board to go ahead and proceed with doing the RFP?
Well, I'm, I'll let Eric give you uh, advice on, on the, the exact way you want to do that. But in the um, the paragraph that says that we're going to be uh, doing things on behalf of the town, it says activities include planning, designing, fundraising, coordinating with other entities, and when specifically authorized by the town to present and to contract on the town's behalf. So what we'll be doing, the, the way I foresee this, is we'll be putting that RFP together. And then uh, when we're satisfied, we'll take it to the town and say, all right, we're going to put this out there. And when somebody um, uh, when they submit it, we'll review their submissions and choose one. Uh, and in that RFP, of course, is going to be what they think that it's going to cost for them to do it. And we'll be coming back to the town and saying, okay, we're ready to enter into contract here. We need some money uh, appropriated in order to do this. So there's going to be several different points where the town needs to take action, and whether you want to authorize that to be done through the mayor or by consensus or by vote. Uh, again, I'll let Eric advise you on that. But um, i- if you vote for the MOU this morning, then I'm going to start working on that RFP uh, with Dr. Matthews, and we'll be taking it for our board to approve as well. So things will start moving after you take action with the MOU.
Sure, Dr. Matthews is aware of people who are doing biodiversity, and you could give us some recommendations at the same time about who we want to have this time, since it's going through the town.
Right.
So I understand that um, two dot A dot little I is, covers that in this um, MOU if we pass this today. So um, thank you for that clarification. Um, do I have a motion to approve this MOU?
So moved. I thought I already did.
Excuse me? Yes. Okay, we have a motion. Amanda.
Barbara.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
Ben.
Yes.
Thank you again for approving that.
Thank you.
There being no further business, I think we approved it twice, but I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I motion we adjourn.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
Ben.
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you for being here.